So, candidate forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Boulder County. And in conjunction with our co-sponsor, the Emergency Family Assistance Association. My name is Josephine Porter. I am a proud longtime member of the League of Women Voters. The League is a nonpartisan political organization. For over a hundred years, we have encouraged informed and active participation in government. The Emergency Family Assistance Association provides stabilizing services, innovative programs, and transformative advocacy to strengthen Boulder's families and create a thriving community. Neither the League nor the EFA supports or opposes political parties or candidates. This forum is being broadcast for live streaming and also for rebroadcast on Channel Eight. Candidates may link to the video when it is released, but you may not place any portion of the video on your, any just small portion of the video on your, on your websites or social media. According to FCC policy, candidate forums must be broadcast in their entirety except by media reporting on the events. Candidates or their staff are asked not to record this forum. Now to the forum. There will be four Boulder City Council seats open for the November twenty twenty five election. Eleven candidates appear on the ballot. Eight were able to participate in today's forum. All were invited. The format will be as follows. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement unless I expand the time. We will then begin with questions submitted from the audience and also combined with possible questions that we had submitted electronically by the Boulder community. Audience members may submit questions by writing them on index cards. Please raise your hand if you need a card or pencil or pen. Once you've written your question, please catch the attention of our ushers and give the card to them and they will bring it up to our question sorters. Questions should be addressed to all candidates rather than directing a question to a particular candidate. And I ask you to submit your questions early, very early in the forum. Our question screening team will possibly combine several similar questions received from the audience into one question on that topic. You may not see your question asked exactly. We will try to ask the candidates as many questions as time permits. Most instances, candidates will get one minute to respond, although I can expand that time to ninety seconds and I will tell, tell them. Please, I guess we're just, I hate to have to say this these days, but please don't take any actions to interrupt or disrupt the forum. Please show respect to the candidates and the voters who have taken the time on this beautiful fall morning to be here. Please refrain from clapping, booing, or otherwise showing your approval or disapproval of any response. This is not a sports event. This is not a pep rally. Save it for tonight. Go Buffs. This is your opportunity to hear from your candidates. Disruptions will only delay the forum and prevent all the others in the audience from hearing what the candidates have to say. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, the candidates are seated as they will appear on the general election ballot. Now we're going to go to the opening statements. For the opening statement, we will begin with candidate Spear.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you all for being here. I'm Nicole Spear, a scientist, a union member, and a mom of two teenagers.
The threat of state violence and discrimination already know how to keep each other safe. We need a local government that removes the many barriers getting in our way. That's what I've worked to do and it's why I'm running for reelection. Thank you.
Candidate Kaplan.
Good morning and again, thank you all for being here. My name is Rob Kaplan. I moved here in nineteen ninety-three, thirty-three years ago. I raised my family here. I have a son at CU. I opened a bike shop called Pro Peloton. I founded that, so I have some experience in what it takes to run a business here. I also served eighteen years in the fire service with Boulder Rural Fire Rescue. I've implemented multi-jurisdictional response plans that have literally saved twenty-minute response times into some of our city and county areas. I'm here because I care about Boulder. I care about the safety. I care about the downtown vitality. And I want to make this place someplace for my son so he can enjoy his future here and everybody else that lives here. Thank you.
Candidate Smoke.
My name is Rob Smoke and I've lived mostly in Boulder since eighty-six. And I served on the city's Human Relations Commission in the early two thousands till two thousand eight, two thousand three, two thousand eight. And was twice named chair. And I'm just sitting here trying to figure out how to do a kind of a nonviolent coup d'etat because, you know, we have some newcomers. Okay, I was trying to make a joke, but, but I did say nonviolent. And I really, really support people in voting for candidates who support divestment. I mean, the news from Gaza is just heartbreaking and terrible and a lot to endure. And there's a number of us in the city who'd like to see change and myself and Aaron Stone over there. I think, I think we're significant voices that are not being heard right now. Thanks.
Candidate Robbins.
Hello. My name is Jenny Robbins. I am Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I am co-chair of the Boulder Chamber Community Affairs Council. I sit on the Play Boulder Board Foundation and I participate in the CU Leadership Program as a mentor. I have two daughters who are thirteen and fifteen who attend BVSD public schools. I live in Gunbarrel with my husband Chris. I'm running for council to make sure that we continue to create an opportunity for all of the voices in the community to be heard. I think we need to focus on good governance, on economic vitality, and we need to create affordable housing for our families. I'm a lifelong community activist. I've been working for, since I was eighteen, to create change in the communities that I live in for our marginalized and our underserved populations. And I think Boulder City Council needs to change and I hope that I am the candidate for that. I look forward to speaking with you today. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
Thank you. My name's Aaron Stone and I've been living in Boulder since two thousand twelve. And I have a family of four, including myself, two boys at Boulder Valley School District. I'm a computer engineer by trade and I'm getting involved because I'm seeing a lot of issues over the past thirteen years that I've lived here with the densification of housing, the homeless issue that's going on downtown that's leading into how people perceive the downtown area. Also, the, the issue that Rob Smoke mentioned earlier with the divestment from genocide. We're seeing council chambers full of people who are asking for divestment. And so far, the council has not responded to that. So I think we can make a real change. Thank you.
Candidate Folkerts.
My name is Lauren Folkerts. I'm Boulder's current mayor pro tem and I love Boulder. I believe it's a place where everyone, workers, families, students, and seniors can thrive. I'm an architect by profession and I bring that same mindset to public service. I deeply listen to people to understand the challenges and constraints. I dive into the details to find solutions to make our community better. Over the past four years, I've learned how to navigate the bureaucracy and have been very effective. I've led the charge to raise Boulder's minimum wage. I've reformed land use to create more affordable housing options. And I've pushed for and passed a nation-leading building code to reduce our climate impacts. The challenges we face, housing costs, climate change, and public safety are complicated, and those complications are compounded by our president. Boulder has always been a leader and I'm running for reelection to make sure that we remain one, a city that leads with compassion, courage, and practicality for a better future.
Candidate Wallach.
You know, I've got to say, I can't put my finger on it, but there's something very familiar about this setting. My name is Mark Wallach. I've been a member of the Boulder City Council for six years. I'm running for a third term because I want to help navigate this city through a very difficult economic period in its history and because of the threat to the city from policies emanating out of Washington DC. In terms of the issues that I want to focus on, at least initially, if I am reelected to the council, the first would be public safety. The second would be maintaining our infrastructure and keeping Boulder in a good condition. And the third is a relatively new issue, but it would be wildfire resilience. Given the threats that we face due to climate change and the location of the city. So, thank you very much.
Candidate Benjamin.
Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here. My name is Matt Benjamin and I want to first thank League of Women Voters and EFA for hosting this event. It's been the honor of my life to serve you as a Boulder City Council person for the last four years. And, you know, we're moving into a really interesting place, given the threats of the federal government and the state imposing on us. It's really critical that we have a leadership that focuses on what our core values are, but pragmatically focus on real results that get the job done. We won't do everything in big leaps, but we do stuff by putting one foot in front of the other and that's what I've been committed to. Things like building a better and safer transportation system, to lowering and lowering barrier of entries for our small businesses to get established, increasing housing for working families in our community, and making it better for us to be safer in our downtown spaces. But it's less about what I've done, but where we go from here. And so the three things I'm going to focus on are middle-income housing, wildfire protection, and strengthening economic vitality. Because at the end of the day, the best way we're going to move forward together is to keep pushing for progress. Thank you.
For our first question, we're going to start with candidate Kaplan. And we have a question from our co-sponsor, the Emergency Family Assistance. And I'm going to give you all ninety seconds for this question. It's a two-part question. Child homelessness is rapidly increasing in Boulder County. With many kids living in cars, motels, or temporary shelter, undermining their health, education, and long-term development. What do you believe is the one factor driving this rise in child and family homelessness in our community? And two, if elected, please share one specific actionable policy, program, commitment you would implement to tackle this urgent challenge? And we'll again, we'll start with Kaplan and candidate Kaplan, we have ninety seconds.
Thank you. As I drove here today, I parked in the library parking lot and I probably parked next to half a dozen to eight cars that had people sleeping in them. I see this problem. I see it by Lolitas. I see it every day. I think one of the biggest issues that forces people into homelessness, specifically children, is when their families lose their income. We're in an economic situation right now where there's a wealth gap that's being created between the lower and the upper. Ninety percent of assets are owned by ten percent of the population. We need to, what we need to do is we need to look at this as like something that we can actually solve. Like when you look at the clutch reports, some of the things in there, there's some low-hanging fruit. This is one of those things. Family assistance, where we help keep people in their homes, help keep families together. And what I would do as a council person is I would fund this and I would make sure that we're talking to the county, all of the nonprofit organizations, as well as the city. This is a regional problem. When they're living in their cars, they're not just from Boulder. They're from the region. They're from all over the United States. So in order to keep kids with their families, we need to keep the families together. We need to keep them fed and we need to keep them financially secure so they can stay in their housing and raise a family in the best way possible. Thank you.
Candidate Smoke.
Well, in terms of finding humane solutions to human problems in this case, I feel like I want to see our city government, our state government, and any other kind of government we're living under to, to operate in a manner that bespeaks collaboration and true motivation, authentic motivation. I grew up in a cooperative housing project in New York City. And it was built under legislation, state legislation. It was called the Mitchell Lama Act. It was passed in nineteen fifty-five. There are still people trying to get versions of the Mitchell Lama Act passed in various states around the country. But in any case, the Mitchell Lama Act made it possible for a state to hold one type of equity in a process, in a project. And the city of New York could hold another type of functional equity. And the people living in those projects had a certain amount of equity as inhabitants and being able to, being given the chance to self-govern and so forth. So, it's not like building a rocket ship to Mars. It's about doing something much more simple and getting people together and getting people on the same page. And we could do a pilot of that without the state here in Boulder. I'd like to see that. Thanks.
Candidate Robbins.
Thank you for the question. So, in my opinion, the reason why we have homeless families and homeless children or nearing that, that point in life is due to rising costs. Cost of living is high everywhere. Our fees are high. Our groceries are expensive. The federal government's not doing us any favors right now. When I had my kids, we didn't have the Family Leave Act. They were both, we both, my husband and I both had to go back to work. I don't think he had any leave at all. I had to go back to work after six weeks. Both of my kids went into daycare at six weeks. We paid for daycare for a total of eight years. It was about forty thousand dollars a year for our kids to be in daycare. I had to work full-time. He had to work full-time in order to live. That's, that's not a maintainable for most families. That's not maintainable. I mean, more than half of my salary was going just for somebody to watch my kids during the day so I could go to work. So really, the cost of living, we have high rents, we have, you know, not enough affordable housing. And EFA is what we need to do, continue to support in order to make sure that these families are protected. And that's what I would do as a council person, is make sure they're supported. EFA is such a unique organization. They don't take any federal funds, which is, I think, the greatest thing that, that any nonprofit can do right now, and they, they don't. So they're, they're basically, they're funded by private donations and local funds. And so if we can continue to support EFA, they can continue to support those communities. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
Thank you. I see the problems going on in our society right now as directly attributable to our federal government. They send billions of dollars overseas to fight foreign wars, but they don't take care of their people at home. What about healthcare? What about the homelessness? What about the rising cost of food? This is all happening because of our federal government's policies. Now, as far as an approach, there isn't just one solution here. Number one, I'd like to see more ADUs and tiny homes built in Boulder, but right now there's prohibitive permitting issues that prevent people from doing that. And in addition, our homeless shelters are underfunded. Together has lost one of their biggest homeless shelters. They've shut it down. And they no longer have a street outreach team. I think we need to fund those programs. Thank you.
Candidate Folkerts.
Thank you. Our families are losing their homes because our paychecks are not keeping up with the price of rent. Too many people in our community are one medical emergency away from eviction. We've increased the minimum wage and that's an important step. We've also enacted newer No Evictions Without Representation that helps people avoid eviction and also creates a fund to help support those who have, who are risk eviction due to non-payment on a month of rent. We've had to fund that over and over again because it runs out of money quickly, but it's a critical piece of keeping our families housed. If I'm reelected, I would like to look at increasing renter protections. Right now, at the state level, there's a prohibition on rent control that keeps us from enacting any form of rent control in this city. I'd also like to look at what we can do without overturning that. In Tacoma, there's something called, there's a program that forces landlords to pay moving costs if they increase rent over a certain percentage year over year. I think we need to look at trying to stabilize the costs for families to be more predictable so that people can plan and have a future in our community. And it's also important that we fund the programs like, like the newer program and the Family Assistance Program to make sure that there's gap funding for our families in our community.
Candidate Wallach.
You know, we deal with a lot of problems on council. Some are very complex and some are not. This is one of the latter. In order to reduce the kinds of homelessness that we're seeing, we need more jobs. We need better paying jobs. If people are employed and can make a living wage, they will not be living in a car. So I just don't regard this as, as the most complex thing we're ever going to deal with on this council. A year ago, the county cut four million dollars from its social services budget. And that has had an impact on everything from the All Roads Shelter to other organizations. We need to restore that money. In fact, we need to increase that money. We have organizations that will address the problems of homelessness, as in eviction prevention, as in other kinds of financial assistance to residents who are, have fallen on hard times. Again, this is one of those things where if we dedicate the resources to it, we can actually have a measurable and positive impact on the outcome. And that's what I want to do. I want to promote economic vitality and I want to get more resources committed to those agencies that actually address this problem. Thank you.
Candidate Benjamin.
Appreciate the question. You know, children that live in homelessness have a significantly higher chance of being homeless when they're adults. And that's one of the most critical statistics when you look at this is can we prevent kids from being homeless to then drastically lower the unsheltered homelessness issues that we see in, in parts of Boulder and our downtown core. So, so there is an upstream issue that we can work with and McKenney Vento with Boulder Valley School District is doing a great job. They can always get more resources, but they are really started the first lines with regards to sort of our schoolchildren. I thought Councilmember Folkerts laid that answer out really well with regards to where we can attack. Again, there are issues that we have, we have jurisdiction, we have powers to influence, and there are issues simply the city does not have powers to influence. And I thought what Lauren put out there was the things we can with regards to renter protections and rent controls and those sorts of things. We can't control the other costs really at all. You know, what I think is equally important is looking at what we're currently doing right now. Our, the clutch report or the new strategy we have for the first time is actually focusing on family homelessness. And this is an amazing step for our community to take. And I think that direction is going to really start to help us. But let's, let's not kid ourselves. The city of Boulder alone is not going to fix this issue. Children, child homelessness and family homelessness is a regional issue and we need regional solutions. And that's why we have to work really hard and put pressure on our county for them to develop a real county initiative for how to address homelessness and the childhood homelessness as a whole. We can do a little bit of it, but we need our county partners to step in and tackle this.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you for this question. As everybody has already stated, it is affordability fundamentally. Housing, healthcare, and childcare are the three costs that have risen the most for families over the last decade. They have not kept up with wages. In terms of what we can do moving forward, the first thing we have to do is shore up what we have and sustain the programs that we do have in place that are being effective in preventing more homelessness. It is, it is going to stem the tide as much as we can against what we're facing. These are programs that some folks have already mentioned, like our eviction prevention program that provides legal support and emergency assistance to families facing eviction. That program has an over ninety-five percent success rate in terms of keeping people housed when they're facing eviction. We also need to keep our minimum wage increases intact that we worked on last year and past. We cannot let those lower at this moment. We also need to keep programs like the Family Resource Coordinators in the schools that provide wraparound support for families who are struggling. We also need to think about how we can come together as private donors within the community to give as much as we can to some of the programs we found to be effective that we're not able to keep going, like our pilot program for guaranteed income that helped two hundred people get by over the last couple of years. It has massive impacts. We can do this by focusing on our long-term financial strategy, engaging in a community-wide conversation about what we're funding as priorities, which we'll do this winter, and focusing on programs and services that will have the biggest outcomes. Thank you.
The next question, we begin with candidate Smoke. It will be for, back to one minute. And the question's about housing. Many of the people who keep Boulder running, like our firefighters, the city workers, cannot afford to live here. How do you envision the ongoing development of low, middle, and marking market housing with the limitations of the carrying capacity of Boulder?
Well, it's interesting that you mentioned city staff or employees. Again, back to the housing project I grew up in, a number of the people who I met there while I lived there were retired garment workers. And why was that? It's because a partner in the deal that was done to build the housing project was with the International Ladies Garment Workers Union. And it was about that collaboration that made lifestyles for people who are retiring from the garment trades. that collaboration that made lifestyles for people who are retiring from the garment trades or might have still been in them to some degree, offering them an opportunity to find housing that just was not available on the market or at mark, you know, not available to people at rates they could afford in the city. So we can do change here, but we need to be motivated. We need to try hard.
Candidate Robbins.
In my opinion, Boulder has done a pretty good job with affordable housing. Right now, we have about forty-two hundred affordable housing units available with or units with a about a thousand in the pipeline. So affordable housing is coming along in Boulder. We clearly have done a good job with market rate housing. We have a lot of that. Right now, we have roughly a thousand available market rate homes right now listed on the MLS. And what we're missing is, like our moderator said, is that missing middle housing and housing that people can live in that is attractive to those middle-income earners. In my opinion, middle-income housing, the definition of that would be somewhere between economic and types of housing. And what we need to do is build housing that people want to live in. Town homes, duplexes, multifamily homes. And we have to make our permitting process adjusted in a way that actually allows for those to be built and potentially lower our impact fees for truly missing middle housing. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
So there's a multi-issue problem here. We claim that we want to be good stewards of the environment, but at the same time, we keep developing outwards places that are environmentally sensitive. Some of the areas we're even looking at are right below N-Car. They're below, they're right above Wonderland Lake. And we also talk about fire mitigation. We can't keep building up there and talk about fire mitigation. We have to put homes in places that are already available, and we want to avoid densification. This is why I'm looking at ADUs and tiny homes as a possible solution. We can't continue to grow Boulder forever. We have limited resources. But I think there are options available that we can address right now. Thank you.
Candidate Fulkert.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, in my time on council, I've pushed for a lot of reform to make it easier and to and actually legal to add ADUs, duplexes, gentle infill throughout our community. But we need to go farther. Though it's still really challenging to bring those development projects forward, even if they are now allowed. And part of the work that I'm excited to work on coming up is our comprehensive plan, continuing to look at that, how we create more missing middle housing and walkable fifteen-minute neighborhoods. I'm also interested in reasonable rent control and renter protections, as I mentioned earlier, and a vacancy or second home tax to ensure that the houses we build are for people and not just for generating revenue. Thank you.
Candidate Wallach.
Here's the bad news. Every candidate I have run with over three elections has promised a great deal of middle-income housing, and we've never delivered. We haven't delivered because the cost of land in Boulder is so excessive that the private sector simply cannot build middle-income housing. I don't think that means the end of the conversation, however. I think we need to use all government-owned land and resources and leverage it for the creation of middle-income housing. Because we own the land, we can make it available at whatever price we deem appropriate to a developer in exchange for an agreement to create the kinds of housing we want and at the prices we need. I do not think anything else is going to suffice. Thank you.
Candidate Benjamin.
So talking about meeting middle and missing middle is one of my top three priorities. So so I'm excited to answer this question. First, I just wanted to sort of dispel any some misconception that's out there. There is no conversation about building below N-Car or above Wonderland Lake. Like, that's not a thing. So so we'll just sort of end that there. But what is really important is the fact that we've had a goal to build a thousand middle-income housing units, and I think we've only built a hundred and fifty over the last ten years. That is because we've created a system in this town that we're that I'm certainly working on with my colleagues to dismantle that have been in place for a long time that makes it impossible to actually build the housing we want to build. We have an inclusionary housing policy that punishes building middle-income housing so that we can build deed-restricted affordable. These things cannot be in conflict. And so my goal with a new middle-income housing tax credit is to provide exemptions for those that get the tax credit to build the middle-income housing and be exempted from the fees that make it too expensive to build the middle-income housing. So we need to think about logically, we need to get rid of our conflicting codes, and we need to incentivize working families to be in our community.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you. I really wish that Rachel Isaacson and Max Lord were here this morning because they, being young workers, have a very firsthand perspective on how hard it is to live here and how some of the solutions that we've been pursuing for low and middle-income workers are and are not working. What I will say is that I am our region's representative to the Denver Regional Council of Governments. We recently did a regional housing needs assessment. Here in Boulder, we're short about ten thousand housing units. Given current needs as well as what we can expect in the next seven or eight years, over seventy percent of those units that were short need to be affordable to people making zero to eighty percent of the area median income. The next step that we're going to be working on is a regional housing strategy that will have some evidence-based and data-informed solutions on how we address this incredibly challenging problem. And my hope is that once we have those solutions, we can get some regional support and state support to pursue them quickly. Thank you.
Candidate Kaplan.
This is about motivation. Motivation between the city, our community, and developers. And that motivation means developers have to make money, and if they can't make money, they're not going to build what we need. What I see is we have a twenty-five percent in lieu of fee when they're building luxury units. If we can incentivize these developers to build middle-income housing, which we need desperately, our school enrollment is dropping, the vitality on the Pearl Street Mall is waning when we don't have a huge influx of visitors, we remove that fee if they do specifically middle-income housing. Let them put that money towards the project. Let their investors get the ROI that they want, and we, in partnership with them, get what we need. We have to do it intelligently as far as zoning goes, safety, evacuation, fire, police, all of that has to be factored in when we increase our population. Thank you.
The next question, and we will begin with candidate Robbins. It'll be sixty seconds. This is about planning and fifteen-minute neighborhoods. In December, the city council will receive recommendations from the community assembly about fifteen-minute neighborhoods. What will you do to ensure the public is fully informed about and has meaningful input into the adoption of any new policies regarding fifteen-minute neighborhoods? How does, how do road diet and right-sized auto lanes fit into this goal?
That was a lot to pack into one question. And for sixty seconds, I'm going to do my best. Fifteen-minute neighborhoods are an interesting thing, and so is community engagement. So about two weeks ago, the city held a community engagement opportunity at one of the middle schools in town about the count plan. And the interesting thing about community engagement in Boulder is the people who go to those events are the people that want the change. The people that don't go to the events don't want the change. So that makes things a little difficult. So it was really interesting for me to watch this because there was a lot of people there who really wanted fifteen-minute neighborhoods. And there was one group that was a little skeptical. And that group basically said, they were a group of business owners, and they said, one of them owned a coffee shop. And she said, in order for a coffee shop to be successful in the city of Boulder, you would have to have four hundred transactions a day. So if you're going to drop retail into the middle of neighborhoods, it is, it'll be very difficult to sustain. So if we're going to talk about doing community hubs, if we're going to talk about doing fifteen-minute neighborhoods, we're going to have to figure out the right way to do it. And if you are for or against it, make sure you attend those community outreach opportunities to make your voice heard.
Candidate Stone.
So I've heard a couple of different sides to this, and I'm concerned with both of them. So first of all, to public engagement. I think we need to audit our public engagement because I've seen big changes that affect neighborhoods. And the only way I find out about them is as I'm riding by on my bike, I see a notice on a telephone pole. We need to find out how to engage neighborhoods before we make these big changes that affect them. And I've heard cases of fifteen-minute neighborhoods where cars are limited, people don't have the right to come in and out as they please using transportation of their choice. I've got a few questions about fifteen-minute neighborhoods and if they're going to be effective or not, and if businesses are going to be able to thrive within them. So I'll be taking a look at that as well. Thank you.
Candidate Fulkert.
Fulkert, but thank you.
My mouth gets stuck. I'm so sorry.
I mispronounce names all the time. I get it. So we have done so much to transform our community engagement process, and we're always trying new experimental things. So with this, we've done this community assembly process, which allows people to get really deeply informed about a topic and then provide us more nuanced feedback around what their concerns are, what they might be optimistic about. And I think that this is a really great way for us to look at fifteen-minute neighborhoods because having a small neighborhood coffee shop can be a really great thing, but it needs to be done thoughtfully and carefully. And so that's what we're in the process of ideating and thinking about. I think there's a little bit of a misconception that these fifteen-minute neighborhoods are going to be like plopping an ideal market down in the middle of a single-family neighborhood. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about very small scale, a bodega, a coffee shop in select locations. Thank you.
Candidate Wallach.
You know, we we do more community engagement than any other location that I I'm aware of. And yet, whenever we enact a policy, we get a slew of emails. Nobody told me. I didn't know about it. I just don't know how much more we could do and still have time to actually govern the city. So I'm fairly happy with our engagement processes. I wish they were more effective, but I just don't see us substantially increasing them because it's not practical. As for fifteen-minute neighborhoods, I do like the idea. I am a little bit skeptical of the economic vitality and viability of businesses that are located there. But I certainly think it's an experiment worth trying. If it works and people get off their, get out of their cars and create a good community, there's nothing wrong with that, and I would advocate for that.
Candidate Benjamin.
Fifteen-minute neighborhoods are nothing new in our community. They were part of the previous comprehensive plan. The only difference is now this council is tasked with how do we implement a strategy that was put in place over a decade ago. So that's the work we're trying to do. Now, fifteen-minute neighborhoods are also also aren't an experiment in our town. I live here. I live in one in South Boulder, the Table Mesa Shopping Center, and that area is a fifteen-minute neighborhood. And so these areas exist in in our community. Go to Holiday Neighborhood, they have one as well. So what we're looking at is how do we take these things and how do we ensure that they connect to all of our values? That they are driven by economic vitality and development? They're driven by good, safe, reliable means of getting to a location, both by bike, by foot, by car? How do we make sure that there's good quality transit and that we have the right mixture of homes in those areas? So by bringing all of these facets together, that's what fifteen-minute neighborhoods are meant to represent, is the conglomeration of all of those pieces that make our community great. So I look forward to continuing this work because at the end of the day, this is how we bring community together when we give them places to be together.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you. And thanks to Lauren and Mark and Matt for taking the bulk of that question. Appreciate it. You know, this this concept of fifteen-minute neighborhoods, it's still being defined. That is kind of what the what the community assembly is for, is to bring people together and to understand what does this even mean? And how does it show up in our community? And I think that is an important thing for us to keep in mind. Once, once that definition is there, it'll come as recommendations to council, to planning board. There'll be lots of opportunities for community to provide feedback on it. But the the first time that I kind of came across this idea of a fifteen-minute neighborhood in those terms was actually part of the Climate Mobilization Action Plan from many years ago, I think, twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen. That was the first place that I mentioned it or I saw it. And it was in in relation to a climate strategy. These are climate strategies. On the road question really quickly, what I would say is our our goal needs to be safety for roads. It's not about just kind of bikes taking over, anything like that. We need, we need to be working on transportation systems that are keeping us all safer, and that's what these programs are doing.
Candidate Kaplan.
Thank you. I was also at the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Planning Session at Casey Middle School. And it was very interesting. And there was a diverse group of people there. Some supported, some didn't support fifteen-minute neighborhoods. To Jenny's point, the four hundred cups of coffee that they mentioned there, you have to be very strategic, but you have to be very realistic about what businesses can go where and if they're going to survive. If we look down Valmont between Twenty-Eighth and Pearl, we have a whole slew of businesses there near the junction, and they're all vacant. So one of the things that I just want to point out is there are communities that are working on this, the Save Iris Little Leagues. There's a community that just got together. They're putting together a coalition. They're going to make an unsolicited tender bid for these ballparks for a community, retirement, and basically coffee shopping, a fifteen-minute hub. Thank you.
Candidate Smoke.
I typically am the guy who scolds people for drinking too much coffee. So I don't know if I can talk about coffee shops and neighborhoods or neighborhoods at all, really. I'm hearing stuff here that just throws me a little bit. People talking about improving public engagement. I don't know if the people in this room are aware that beginning this past August seventh, if you're speaking at the podium, your video image will not be received by the public. And I believe that people should have enough equity just by being citizens or being residents here to participate fully. And part of that is just being on camera if you have something to complain about. And yeah, now and then, it's going to contradict the views of, you know, people during the day as here incumbents. But that's what it's about. That's what good governance is about. It's about hearing from everyone, not restricting it to people you want to hear from the most. Thanks.
The next question, and we will begin with candidate Stone. It's about e-bikes. Boulder has no minimum age for riding Class One and Class Two electric bikes, and they are essentially motor vehicles. What will you do to strengthen and enforce our rules, which is for the growing problem of e-bikers riding often at high speeds on streets, sidewalks, and paths, and blowing through stoplights and stop signs? We need to make our community safer.
So I'm glad I got this question first. I'm actually quite passionate about this. I ride an electric unicycle myself. And first of all, I want to, I want to bring to attention that in Colorado, there's a law that that people on bikes and e-bikes, which are classified as bicycles, are actually allowed to ignore stop signs and stoplights as long as it makes sense. They still have to yield to oncoming traffic. So that's something that's been passed at the Colorado level. Now, for me personally, I don't like seeing people riding at high speeds on bike paths. I would like to see a fifteen mile an hour speed limit, which is restricted, but it has to be applied to both manual cyclists and e-bikers as well. Because right now, we see bicycles that are allowed to go down hills at thirty, forty miles an hour. Nobody stops them. But at the same time, they'll enforce the capabilities of a Class One, Class Two, Class Three e-bike, which I find that to be problematic. We should, we should ban the behavior, not what you're riding. Thank you.
Candidate Fulkert.
Thank you. In many ways, these micro-mobility devices, these e-bikes, scooters, are really transformative for our community. They're very helpful in addressing kind of the last mile gap in between public transit and places of work and allowing people to move away from needing a car for every trip. But I agree, there are issues that we need to address. We do have speed limits on most of our paths and but people don't, just like in a car, people don't always obey the law. And figuring out how we address that is complicated. We had a colleague who's not up here because they're not up for reelection, ask a question about this recently, and we're working on getting more legal advice on our options. It's something that I'm really interested in looking into more, but I don't have a detailed plan at this moment for how we're going to address it, just that we promised, I promise to continue looking into this issue.
Candidate Wallach.
You know, we have a Vision Zero program to minimize or eliminate accidents and from cars against pedestrians. I think we have to apply the same principle to bikes and pedestrians. And at the moment, we need to find some protections for those who are walking on the sidewalks and are behaving our laws and those who are not on e-bikes. I'm reluctant to get too regulatory about this because you've got kids riding on the sidewalk. got kids riding uh on the sidewalk, and kids will do that. Um, but we do need to look at this more closely because some of the behaviors are egregious, and they are endangering pedestrians, and they're just, they're not acceptable. Um, I am with Lauren. I don't have a particular program yet, but we need to have one, and we will get one.
Candidate Benjamin.
All right, you're seeing a line of agreement here. Um, I agree, this is, this is a growing issue. Um, I, I rode my e-bike here today and, and ride it all the time. Going to be riding it back to the Buffs game again later tonight, so go Buffs. On the sidewalk, 15 miles an hour, so it won't go any faster, I promise. Um, I mean, I think Lauren and, and Mark are, are right. Um, this is a growing issue, but at the end of the day, we are looking into it, and we're going to talk to our transportation team. We're going to talk to BPD. We're going to talk to all of them about how and where we can enforce the rules, where we can enhance them, what that looks like. And really more importantly, we have to look at sort of how we apply rules and new laws from an equity standpoint. Do we want things that um unnecessarily punish kids or, or more broadly others? And so I think this is something that we need to look at. You know, we've, we, you know, we, we've done this with other things where we introduce something new and we sort of see where it goes, and then we, you know, put in the proper guardrail. So I expect this council to be able to manage this quite well um and get some rules on the books and enforce them here in due time. But it first takes a little bit more observation and understanding of the data, and we'll get there.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you. Um, you all keep leaving me without much to add. Um, I am definitely in favor of some common sense safety regulations on this issue. It's new technology, right? We're figuring out how it, you, um, how people are using it in our community. Um, and I think we, we do have an opportunity to think about what we could do. Um, I think there are things to explore. Uh, minimum age requirements, I think, are one. Um, some sort of test for knowledge of rules and laws and basic etiquette uh would be another. Um, to me, this needs to be a community oriented conversation where we're talking not just with families, um, children, people who are riding e-bikes, but also uh bike shops, uh the cycling community, those who are involved in um selling them and putting them forward. Um, I think we do have to be really careful about putting in place more enforcement, given the federal climate that we're in right now. Uh, that, that is going to put a lot of us at risk um and not, not just vulnerable groups, all of us. So um, I, I would love to see a working group come together to start thinking about how we can put in place some, some um common sense solutions to this issue. Thank you.
Candidate Kaplan.
There's been a lot of good things said about this. Um, first of all, if it doesn't have pedals, it's not an e-bike. So we can knock that out of the park right now. Um, you know, I had a dog for 16 and a half years. He just passed in April. Um, but when I took him off leash, I had to have a tag. I had to watch a video. I had to understand the rules of the trails. I don't think it's that intrusive when you buy an e-bike that the city requires a small license. You watch a video, you understand the rules, you understand the yield, um, and you become safer. I have a friend who's legally blind, and he's petrified of bike paths. He's petrified of Wonderland Lake. He can't walk there without fear of an e-bike or a scooter coming by. So I think it's education. I also think it's accountability and responsibility for parents as well. Thank you.
Candidate Smoke.
I would first say that there's uh plenty of times, particularly walking around the downtown area in Boulder, uh, also Denver, where I feel like I could really use a helmet just as a pedestrian. And I, I have been hit. I have been hit by somebody on a scooter. It wasn't an e-bike. Um, but uh, I think overall, uh, we need to encourage a better atmosphere of people uh adapting to using vehicles that can travel more quickly than expected. And I think the way to do that is through education. I think uh Mr. Kaplan here had a good suggestion there, and I've heard some other good things here. Thanks.
Candidate Robbins.
So yesterday I had the opportunity to go to the Friends School and do a Q and A with 40 eighth graders, which I will tell you was the most terrifying forum I've ever done by far. Um, it was a lot of questions. And of the questions they asked, they were, they were amazing. Wildfire questions, homeless questions, and water questions, and carbon emissions. Of the 90 minutes, about 30 minutes at the end were all e-bike questions from these eighth graders. Most of them had e-bikes, and they were concerned with the safety of e-bikes. They're like, how do we make people stop doing wheelies? And how do we make people stop driving recklessly? It's really scary out there. And so I presented, similar to Rob's, to these kids after some conversation, like, how do we do this? What if we had, when you got your e-bike, you go onto the city website, you watch a video, you take a test, and then that test culminates in what's a per- what's like a permit, and then that gets attached to your registration? Would you be willing to do that? And every one of them was like, yes, not, not just for me, but so I feel safe on the road too. So kids are not people that we're talking to a lot about this, and they're the ones that are riding the bikes mostly, and they're riding them quickly. So I think we need to engage the youth.
The next question, and we'll begin with um candidate Fulkert. Um, do you support a city resolution demanding a ceasefire in Gaza? And should the city of Boulder divest interests in corporations selling armaments to Israel?
Just an easy one, I see. Um, so I think it's really important for the council to be responsive to our community. And we have heard a lot of community members interested in having this commu- in having the council move forward a ceasefire resolution. I have voted in favor of that. Um, I, I would like to see that paired with other things the community is concerned about. We also, you know, a- after the other attacks, um, pairing that with antisemitism, with a lot of the other things that are going on in our community. We don't um control international politics, and so we actually don't have to solve this issue. Um, we can just reflect the concerns on both sides that we're hearing from our community because making our community feel heard is important. Um, and it is also important for us to move forward and focus on the everyday issues of our community because that's where we have the real control to make change. Thank you.
Candidate Wallach.
Absolutely not on both counts. It's not our job. Our job is to fix potholes. It's to protect the community from wildfire and a number of other functions that we do with varying degrees of success. We are not a foreign policy organization. It's in our rules that we are not supposed to be opining on foreign policy issues. And there's a moral relativism to this. Uh, why are we doing it on this issue and not protesting the treatment of a million Uighurs who are in concentration camps in China? On that theory, we should be um uh divesting from all Apple products and a hundred other companies. This is not our function. Our function is to um run the city of Boulder as best we can, provide health, life, and safety for our residents, and keep the city prosperous. Everything else is just noise.
Candidate Benjamin.
Uh, so uh Mark's 100% correct. No on both counts. Um, at the end of the day, this is, this is just not our role. And eh, the slippery slope gets, 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 I think, presented to us pretty quick. Um, if a small group of people says it must be uh ceasefire for this, then is it then for Ukraine? Is it then for Sudan? Is, and then all of a sudden, we then spend all our time embarking on international issues. I, I did not go to school on a foreign policy background, so that's not what I'm here for. Um, but that being said, it is still important for us to still hear community. But just because we don't act on what some members of community demand us doing does not mean they weren't heard or that their concerns aren't validated. It is just not an action that this council should be taking. With regards to divestment, it is not something we should do as well because, again, the slippery slope. Why aren't we then removing, talking about companies that invest in the war in Ukraine or any other conflict? Again, if it becomes a small group of people demanding we do things, it becomes the tyranny of the minority, and we cannot allow that in our community. We need to focus on our local issues.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you. Um, I know this is an issue that's having uh really, really strong impacts on a lot of people in our community for various reasons. Um, one of the things that I've been focused on uh quite a bit over the last four years is trying to remove um bias from our city um processes. And we can remove bias from systems when we make our decisions clear and transparent and have um very uh formal kind of guidelines for how to proceed. Um, if we're going to be investing uh the city's time and resources into international and national issues, we need to have a process that makes it clear when and how we will engage on those issues. If we don't have that clarity and transparency, uh, my preference is always to stay away from it until we have the time and space to be able to um pursue that clarity. Thank you.
Candidate Kaplan.
Also no on both. To me, it's really clear. It's called the City Council. It's not the International Council. We don't have the depth of knowledge to go in and determine what's a weapon and what's not a weapon. Um, the companies in question are Microsoft, Toyota, Caterpillar, and Oracle. I, I can show you so many examples of Microsoft and hospitals and EMS and fire doing amazing things. All of our city is using Microsoft right now. We're not weaponizing it. Caterpillar is building hospitals and communities as well. You can take a Louisville Slugger baseball bat and play baseball with it or commit a crime with it. It, I agree, it's a slippery slope, and we can probably find something negative about any company that's driven by profit. Thank you.
Candidate Smoke.
First of all, it's not a slippery slope to find that there's actual genocide occurring in Gaza, and maybe it's going on in other places in the world, but our government isn't demanding fealty to interests that are absolutely the most destructive interests imaginable, profiting from the suffering of children, people dying of starvation, people being bombed, families being intense, being bombed. I think it's an atrocious, I think it's an abomination that we um just uh absolutely have dismissed. People who've come here, have lost families in Gaza, who've endured all kinds of hardships. It's just incredible to me that uh the city could not take divestment seriously. And mentioning Microsoft, they just divested part of what they do with Israel and uh did it on their own because of BDS. Thanks.
Candidate Robbins.
I feel for all the tragedies that are happening in the world right now. I'm a hyper-local candidate, and I just, I do not believe that international politics belongs in uh city council chambers. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
So first of all, correction, it's Cisco, not Oracle. And I would like to know um, you know, when we, when did we send $380 billion to China to persecute Uighurs? When did we send $380 billion to Russia uh to attack Ukraine? Um, our government has sent $380 billion to Israel and our own weapons to kill Palestinians. So I think it very much is a city council issue. And um, yeah, I would like to also uh point out that when it comes to something like ICE, well, somebody could say, well, hey, that's a federal issue. That's not city council's problem. But everybody on this stage, including myself, have taken a stand that they are violating rights of people that live here right now. We have made these investments, and we are responsible for these investments, and it very much is a local council issue, and I will take a stand, and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
The next question will begin with candidate Wallach. It's a funding question. It's kind of multitask, but it'd still be just six, 60 seconds. As candidates, you've mentioned things that need more funds. Um, first of all, do you think the city government is currently bloated? And for more funds, where would you cut funding or get additional money to increase funding for your favorite programs?
I don't think there's enough money for all of my favorite programs. Um, but that's just the nature of the world. Uh, I don't find the city government particularly bloated. That's a, that's an easy uh target. Um, you know, it's been on the internet, how many um communications personnel we have. I just, I just don't find most of that to be credible. Uh, we're in a very tough economic position at the moment, and there are very few things I want to expand funding for right now. Going forward, when the resources are there, I want to fund uh more heavily some of our social service programs. I want to fund our programs to plow our streets and fill our potholes. And I think that, that's something most people would appreciate. Um, and I want to make sure that we uh deal with our infrastructure needs, of which we have over $300 million of unfunded projects. And, you know, this is city business. If the money is there, I'll find a place to spend it. But if the money is not there, I will not. Thank you.
Candidate Benjamin.
Great question. Um, I, I agree with Mark. I, I wouldn't consider the city particularly bloated. I have to give uh our city manager, Nuria Rivera Vandermeide, a lot of credit for how she's managed our budget in coming through and out of COVID. Those are really hard times, so I think uh we're in decent shape. We're in actually better shape than most cities around Colorado because you look at City of Denver, they're having to cut $200 million. So, so we're in pretty good shape comparatively. Um, there are a lot of great things that, that we should continue and enhance investment of. I would say wildfire is one, protecting, certainly enhancing our maintenance of core services is another, and trying to make sure that we can actually, you know, further our homelessness strategy. Where we cut right now, not that many places, but I would say there's areas to gain some revenue. Um, I think the vacant home tax that, that Lauren pointed out, something I absolutely support. Um, these homes are empty, so we might as well repatriate the sales tax that otherwise would be coming to our community if people were living in those homes. So that's one right off the bat. Um, so I think we just have to wait for some of our economic conditions to improve, and that's why I strongly support a really robust economic development strategy because through growing our revenues, we can reinvest back into our community.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you. Um, I am going to echo Matt a little bit. Uh, it's no accident that we are um in the place that we're in right now, um, it, which is uh to be in relatively good shape compared to what others are having to do. Um, in 2025 and 2026 combined, uh, we'll have cut around 15 to 20 million uh dollars. Um, some of those programs, it's really hard to see go, like the Guaranteed Income Program that I mentioned earlier. Um, I think in, in terms of what I would cut, i- it's not really about what I want. It's about what we want as a community, and I encourage everybody here and everybody who'll be listening later to look out for the Fund Our Future conversation that we're going to be starting this winter. It's a community-wide conversation around what our city's funding priorities should be. And the more that we all get involved, the more that those priorities uh are going to reflect our deepest needs and desires for our city, um, which is going to be incredibly helpful as we move forward, especially with the outcome-based budgeting uh mechanisms that we put in place. It'll make sure that everything we're doing is having a measurable impact on advancing those priorities.
Candidate Kaplan.
When I talk to the community, the one thing that I hear is we have a spending problem. They don't want to pay for it. They don't want new taxes. They don't want us to craft a ballot issue to, to plug a hole. What I would focus on is our infrastructure, our streets, our roads, our sidewalks, our common areas, our public spaces, our safety, our fire resiliency, our evacuation routes, and all the things that we have right now. I want to maintain what we have before we start another big project. I think it's critical. I don't believe we're going into anything but an economic downturn in the next four years, and we have to look at it from a, a bigger macro uh perspective. Um, funding-wise, uh DDA, a Downtown Development Authority, where they do tax incremental funding, uh programs like that, I think have a lot of potential for generating uh additional income. Thank you.
Candidate Smoke.
Well, something I've observed over uh more than half, at least the last 20 years that I've lived in Boulder, the city itself has sort of just been on a very tough treadmill in terms of working with people who are houseless or homeless. The idea that we spend millions, I, I don't know what it is every year. It's like, I think it's like 2 million bucks, maybe 4 million, something like that, just rousting houseless individuals from tents. People, I mean, people aren't uh doing urban camping for their amusement and uh recreational uh needs. They're doing it because they have to do it uh due to the lack of funding. So uh for, for housing. So I think that uh we need to, a more practical approach to changing things. It's not working what we have right now in terms of using the police as the uh, as the guard against uh houseless people.
Candidate Robbins.
My issue with the city is more how we spend the money. Um, right now, we have 1,500 full-time employees in the city, and yet we spend about $30 million a year in unspecified consultants. Um, I've talked to the Parks Department directly about this and, and asked why. You know, we have a pretty large uh consulting list in parks, and they've talked about bringing some of that back in to the Parks Department, and that's what I would like to do on council. I think we should all be alarmed that our sales and use tax is dropping. I have heard some existing council number, members blame that on an aging population, and I disagree. I think that although this may be a small part of the problem, I think it has more to do with some of the issues we have got going on downtown. Our planning department does not allow businesses to get up, up and running economically and fast enough. We have high rents. We're making it difficult for drivers to get downtown. We make it difficult to park. Safety is an issue. Um, we had to remove the creek path as- We had to remove the creek path as tourist attraction from our website due to safety. We don't have enough arts and culture to bring in tourists. So there are different ways that we can look at our budget in order to increase revenues other than taxation. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
I think it's really difficult to say that there's government bloat without doing a thorough analysis of the budget, but I can talk about priorities. I think we need to refund several groups that are dealing directly with the homeless issue that goes directly into the vitality of downtown, which a lot of people are avoiding. Businesses are closing up because rents are way too high, their costs are too high. I don't think imposing more taxes on them is going to help the issue. And honestly, we, we're not putting enough money into the safety of our bike paths and transportation. So I think I would focus on those things. Thank you.
Candidate Fullkort.
Thank you. As our city manager likes to say, we are in a constrained budget environment, which as Matt and Nicole have mentioned, is actually much better than many of our surrounding communities. We're not laying off staff in droves and that is because our manager has done a good job of getting us in a stable budget position. But we have to make sure that every dollar advances our vision, not just for a just resilient and thriving Boulder. This is a tough job and we don't do it because, because it's the most fun thing. We do it because we care a lot about this community and we care a lot about making sure every dollar gets spent in the most effective way as possible. I'm interested in making sure our budget is more transparent to help build trust. And if reelected, I'm going to advocate for a budget that reflects Boulder's commitment to affordability, sustainability, inclusion, push for greater community engagement in budget priorities, and try to close funding gaps in critical areas while promoting fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Candidate Benjamin, we're going to begin with the next question. We're going to 45 seconds. I'm going to try, and these are all important issues, but I'm going to try and get you guys to move through a couple of them, so I know it's a lot. I may shorten it to 30 if I find you rambling. Okay, 45 seconds. Boulder's Guarantee Income Pilot is coming to an end in December. What are your thoughts on the continuation of the pilot?
That's a great question. This program came out of COVID. So when we got a massive influx of government funding, as every community did, to sort of help keep everybody afloat, one of the things that we had heard, and really through our partners with EFA and other organizations, that this was something worthwhile to try. And we did. And the results have actually been rather, rather good when you think about it. So, so we've proven that when you provide people with a baseline of income that stabilizes them and allows them to focus on some other things, their core things, rather than what's happening the next hour or the next day and whether or not they can stay there or keep their kids. So it's a successful program. The big question is, is the city the best government entity to support a program like that? It should probably be federal or state-funded. But I would like us maybe to think about how we can partner with other groups to keep that going, but in this current budget environment, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you. So one of the things I appreciate about what the city has done, I see our deputy director of Housing and Human Services in the back there, is to commit to supporting the infrastructure for this program moving forward. So we are able to continue administering it. What we need is the community's support to fund it. And our Housing and Human Services staff and others in community are starting to talk about how we can put that, that funding together. Boulder, all the fundraisers know Boulder is a really hard place to fundraise, given the wealth that we have in our community. And it's really about all of us thinking, how can we come together to support these programs that are having incredible impacts for folks in our community who are struggling? And we really have to step up as a community and work together.
Candidate Kaplan.
Originally from the COVID area, era, the ARPA funds used to subsidize some of the people that were struggling, it made sense. It also created a sense of staying power within the community. That being said, I think that those funds need to be targeted more, like the question that we had earlier about homeless kids, like how do we take these funds and where do we take these funds from? How do we fund it? And direct them to families that are in need and that really truly need this money. It needs to be transparent. I'm going to be honest, I don't have an answer where that money would come from right now, but I do believe in supporting the community that's on, on the verge of losing their homes.
Candidate Smoke.
Well, I think what we have here is a version of compartmentalization at its finest. I mean, this is actually a very humane solution to human problems and it's been around for a while and it deserves a lot more attention and support. But I say compartmentalization because, you know, the other issues that we've brought up, we've talked about here a little bit today, like the genocide in Gaza, well, they require a humane response as well. They require a moral response. They require us to put morality first. And I think when we do that, we make it easier for programs like this to continue. Thanks.
Candidate Robbins.
I think outcomes on a program like this are always going to look good. If you're giving somebody money with no real strings attached, that they're probably going to be pretty happy about it. So with that in mind, I think that we should continue to support people with those funds, but not through the city. As Matt said, I think we should work through our partners in order to, to provide that opportunity for people if it's needed. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
I'll be the first to admit, I don't know the full details of this program and I'm more than willing to learn more about it. I do recognize it's extremely expensive and difficult to live in Boulder and not all families can make ends meet. And if possible, I would love to fund it. I would have to learn more about it and see where we can fit that into the budget. Thank you.
Candidate Fullkort.
Thank you. Last weekend, Nicole and I attended an event at Modus Theater where we were able to hear a number of stories from people who have gone through this program. And it was really amazing and one of my takeaways was that this funding not only helped them, but their community. People largely invested in their children, in their family members, avoiding eviction, dealing with medical costs. And it's really hard to put a dollar value on the tremendous impact this program has had. It's heartbreaking that we don't have the funding to continue it and I hope we will find a nonprofit partner that is interested in working with us, using the infrastructure we've built to help this program continue. It really was transformational and I encourage everyone to look up that video.
Candidate Wallach.
Obviously, the program has had success. My problem with it is that there's a certain arbitrariness to it. We are helping a couple of hundred people, but with that same money distributed across NUR, EFA, Bridge House, and Community Foundation, we can help thousands of people. And that's just my predilection on this. I want to help more, not fewer. And we are missing an opportunity to provide more services to a wider range of individuals than we can simply by helping a couple of hundred people. And we will never have the money to expand it universally and in the absence of that, I prefer a wider range of services for a greater number of individuals. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to 30 seconds, so I can get as many of these in. And we'll start with candidate Spear. Are you in favor of developing CU South? What will you do to protect the highly ecologically important gateway to Boulder? 30 seconds.
All right. I mean, a lot of this is moving forward already, right? This is, this is CU's land. They've kind of given us some ideas of what they may do with it. They have been partners. I think, I think what we can do at this point is continue to work with CU, to partner with them, to make sure that as they move forward, they're doing so in a way that is protective of some of the ecosystems that have developed there, of the ways that people are using that space and the connections that it has to our community. Thank you.
Candidate Kaplan.
Not enough time. It is a contentious issue. There are a lot of community members, I know it was voted on twice to pass, but there are a lot of community members that want to see more research into not using a dam, moving the reservoir to the north side versus the south side. I would be in favor of reopening the engineering aspect of it and getting some more quotes and feasibility studies on that, from a community level as well.
Candidate Smoke.
Well, I haven't prioritized this issue, so I don't feel like I'm qualified to give expert opinion on it, but this issue does teach us how valuable every single inch of Boulder's space happens to be at the present moment, of value always to someone. So that's what I'll say for now. Thanks.
Candidate Robbins.
I support it due to the life, safety, and flooding aspect of the CU South project, but I do think, I agree with Nicole, we have to work with CU to make sure that we protect that space ecologically. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
Well, I've spoken directly with the hydrologist that tried to warn the city before the 2012 flood and he was ignored. And look what happened there. He says that the current flooding solution, the current mitigation solution is the wrong one. We need to do mitigation at the south side. You can only let water go through, you can't dam it up. And I think this is just a big handout to CU to let them do whatever they want on a floodplain. I think we need to really look at what they're doing. Thank you.
Candidate Fullkort.
Thank you. This dam is really critical in protecting the life, safety of a number of our community members. And also, this issue has been voted on more times than anything else while I've been on council or thought about being on council. It's moving forward because of the will of the voters and I agree with Nicole and Jenny that we will work with CU to make, to do everything we can to make sure the environment in that area is protected.
Candidate Wallach.
I was a member of council and actually participated in the negotiation of this agreement. It is a very strong agreement. It adds over 150 acres to our open space. It provides all kinds of protections against overdevelopment. We have height restrictions that don't occur elsewhere on the CU campus. This is a very good agreement and it has been studied to death. And at some point, you have to move away from just the studies and actually act. And it has been approved twice by referendum. So, yes.
Candidate Benjamin.
It's simple. We're just going to keep progress. We're going to keep looking forward. We're going to keep trying to protect people. If we're going to have urgency about protecting ourselves from wildfire, we're going to maintain the urgency to protect 2,500 residents that live south of this area that was flooded in 2013. We cannot continue to play this game where if we don't like something, we want to halt it, stop it at the cost of everything else. We have to be able to keep moving our community forward and keep pushing for progress. That is the only way we keep our community safe and the only way we move forward. This thing's been litigated to death, as Mark said, and so let's move on and let's focus on the issues that are in front of us, not the ones that we are going to continue to work on that we've now moving past.
Okay, another 30 seconds and we'll start with candidate Kaplan. What programs or actions should the council take regarding wildfires, especially the commitment communities next to open space?
Thank you. 30 seconds. Okay. We have a WUI plan, international WUI plan. We voted on it. Some of these things need to be retroactive. They don't have to be cost-prohibited. We can do some very effective things, limbing trees up six feet, five-foot defensible space to start, and one-inch eighth screening. That would be a great start. We've got $2,000 from the city, $500 from the county. I think that needs to be updated and we need to fund more so people can harden their homes.
Candidate Smoke.
Well, I happen to love juniper trees and it's just fascinating to me that somehow they've become demonized, but I think it is fair to say that people who are living close to open space face extra challenges that, you know, somebody in central Boulder doesn't have, particularly if they're raising junipers around their home. So it has to be examined from a pragmatic view where we give top consideration to the people who are most vulnerable.
Candidate Robbins.
We have such a unique opportunity here that we know a disaster is coming. I mean, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. So we know the fire's coming. And Boulder has a history of being retroactive about some of these things and we need to be proactive about this problem. I really think that we need to have codes and ordinances in place to stress the urgency of the situation. I think we'll have a number of community members that will immediately comply with the codes and for those who can't, we can help. We already have about $2,500 in rebates that are available for people to use when dealing with hardening their homes. Thank you.
Candidate Stone.
I think we continue encouraging people to harden their homes, but we also don't require those things because it's a huge cost. And in addition, we don't allow development of the place that's marked Area 3 Annex on the Boulder Development Plan, which means it is possibly on the future chopping block for development. I don't think we should allow that place to be developed. And also, we continue to buffer between where the fire-prone areas are and the homes. Thank you.
Candidate Fullkort.
Thank you. So I appreciated Rob's answer. I would add that I think it's also really important for us to invest in education and outreach. We need to sort of change the culture around this to make it so that everyone sees how important it is to comply. And I'm open to cost-effective retroactive measures, especially when we can pair them with funding and financial support. Thank you.
Candidate Wallach.
Did you say 30 minutes or 30 seconds? We just discussed this last Thursday at council in a study session. There are 50 things you can do to harden your home. There are 50 things we can do on our open space to make it less resilient to fire. We need to change the culture in the city in terms of awareness of this issue and we need to act retroactively or not. There are so many things we can do. We need to do them now.
Candidate Benjamin.
Yeah, this is urgency. We need to not let perfection be the enemy of the good and there are things we can start doing right now. If you go to my website, you'll see a three-phase plan that focuses on educate, empower, and enforce, that takes our curbside assessment and then builds on our DHAs, which are detailed home assessments. And those are then things that we can then have a plan for each homeowner in those areas if they're specified as being a high-risk fire around their house. And then the city has a way to then enforce those mechanisms, giving them enough time, providing resources. This is within the framework of what we had. It doesn't cost extra money and it's the right way to start building a resilient. If the west side is our front line, it needs to be fortified.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you. While fire prevention in our city is based on national best practice and evidence-based standards, the goals which I have supported are resilient landscapes, fire-adapted communities, and enhancing our fire response. Our recently adopted community or updated Community Wildfire Protection Plan, we identify public education, community engagement, and reducing structural ignitability as critical for a wildfire-adapted community. For a lot more information, I encourage you to go to the brand-new wildfire-ready website that the city has where we are detailing all the work that we are doing and everything that's still coming.
And this will be our last question. I have to tell you, we have a whole slew of other questions. I'm going to tell you, we had questions on iris fields, we have questions on the hill and all of the greater density problems that have been caused by the greater density, leaf blowers, electric leaf blowers versus gasoline, and the 5G towers, small and large, tall 5G towers. But I'm going to ask you kind of a summary question and we're just going to give you 45 seconds because we're really running out of time. After all we've discussed today, and we'll begin with candidate Smoke, after all we've discussed this morning, what do you think, can you summarize the most important challenges you think are facing Boulder and how the city council should address them? Easy.
Fine. Well, I think morality should come first and it should come first with everything that we do, whether it's city business or relating to people who are talking about the moral issue of our day. That's what Gaza is. That's what Israeli aggression is right now. It's the moral issue of our day. And it's not a matter of being on one side of political fence, pro-Palestine or pro-Israel. It's about stopping genocide right now. And it's horrendous to me that people are so compartmentalized with their thinking that they can have, oh, humane solutions for all these things in Boulder. It's kind of counterfeited when we can't address the reality of what's happening on the ground with people being starved to death and bombed to death in Gaza today. So that's what I feel about it.
Candidate Robbins.
The most important topics, I think, are good governance, getting back to basics, making sure that we take care of our roads and our rec centers. In parks, we have people come in all the time and nobody's ever asking for less services. So we need to make sure that we're taking care of the infrastructure that we have in those assets. We have to bring families back to Boulder by creating that missing middle housing that we've been talking about. And we have to continue to create economic vitality by supporting our businesses, both big and small. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for having us today.
Candidate Stone.
I really wish I got the 5G question. I was a network engineer, so I could talk all about radiated emissions with this person. But I think the, the big problems are homelessness, what we're dealing with there. But I think the, the big problems are homelessness, what we're dealing with there, and the problems that go along with the perception of downtown, the high cost of doing business, the high taxes on those businesses, and how much people are paying just to live here in Boulder and the high cost of housing. I think I'd like to focus on that. Thank you.
Candidate Fullkort.
The challenges we face are complex: housing costs, climate change, public safety, and the new issues brought before us by our federal government. I'm running for reelection because I believe in local government. Over the past four years, I've helped lead bold, progressive changes in housing, wages, and climate policy. I'm not someone who focuses on ideals, but on real results. And I've done this while building coalitions, navigating complex politics and regulations, and keeping community voices at the center. I'm proud of what we've accomplished, but I'm not done yet. I hope you will re-elect me because I believe in fighting for a Boulder where everyone has a roof over their head, working people are paid fairly, and our policies reflect the urgency of our climate crisis. Thank you.
Candidate Wallack.
I start, as always, with public safety, which is key to our economic vitality and the manner in which people perceive their life in Boulder. I then move on to infrastructure, as I mentioned before, because it is high time that we got streets that were in a condition to drive on, streets that are plowed in the winter, rec centers that are renovated, and getting our two firehouses that now operate out of single-family residences into proper facilities. And finally, wildfire resilience, which we just discussed, and which is an issue of increasing importance and is critical to our future. We have to avoid a marshal fire here. Thank you.
Candidate Benjamin.
Well, first, again, thank you for all the opportunity. I'm going to give a quick plug for EFA real quick. They're having their fundraiser tomorrow night. So, if you have, if you aren't registered to go and aren't going, please make sure you reach out and donate to EFA. It's a great organization, our community, and a sponsor for today. So, show them some love. You know, the three things that I'm going to focus on are, again, economic vitality, wildfire resilience, and, and middle-income housing. These are really the challenges. How do we build a community where people, working families, our first responders, businesses, and workers can just thrive in our community? We need all of those three things to occur. But it isn't really just focused about what I've done. It's where we go from here, and I think this is really important. We think about pushing for progress, taking one step at a time. And that's what I'm going to commit to you, is one step forward at a time.
Candidate Spear.
Thank you again for having us all this morning. We need to identify our community's top priorities for programs and services so that we can move through these economic challenges and shrinking budgets intentionally and in a way that reflects our progressive values. Relatedly, we absolutely need to finish our long-term financial strategy so we can fund the services and programs that we need and want. We need to finish our work on an economic plan to protect our small businesses and local economy and our city revenue, which is very dependent on sales tax. A lot of people in Boulder, including myself, are experiencing job losses, and this is impacting our city budget. Finally, we need to be protecting the rights of all Boulderites from federal policies that put us at risk. We're living in increasingly dangerous times, and we must continue to stand up for the safety of everyone in our community. Thank you.
Candidate Kaplan.
Thank you. My priorities are safety. And when I say safety, it's not just police, it's not just fire. I bucket those together. It's inseparable. You need police and you need fire to conduct an evacuation, to conduct patrols, to keep human-started ignitions from happening on red flag days. I'm passionate about our budget and transparency and where the money goes, our downtown vitality and economic development. And then, for housing and transportation, again, I see those together. They're, they're almost inseparable because it's hard to build housing without ways to get around and safe ways to get around and evacuate as well. Thank you.
On behalf of the League and EFA, I would like to thank our candidates, not only for your participation in tonight's or today's forum, but also your participation in the democratic process. Running for office, as you all know, and serving as an elected official is very hard work. Thank you to our volunteers, our forum volunteers, for your essential help. A huge thank you to the League's 2025 election sponsors, Elevations Credit Union and Inspire Salon and Skin in Longmont. A short and very sweet reminder that donations to the League of Women Voters help us continue our advocacy and education in the community. Members are downstairs as you lead, ready to accept donations via tap to play, to pay. Please donate. And for more information about the upcoming election, all of the candidates have been asked to respond to vote411.org. That is the National League's Voter's Guide, basically. And thank you to all, remember, democracies, not a spectator sport. But thank you all for coming, and I think a big round of applause to EFA.